November the tenth, two thousand and fifteen. We'll begin by the calling the meeting to order and we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Record, if you would, let's do a reverse roll call order tonight.
On all items?
Yes, on all items.
Honorable Councilman Hurd?
Present.
Honorable Councilwoman Green?
Present.
Sorry. Honorable Councilwoman Norris?
Present.
Honorable Vice Mayor Dyer?
Present.
Sorry. Honorable Mayor Belbury?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the invocation that will be led by Mr. Lewis Bryant.
Our Grand Eternal Father in Heaven, we come before you this evening to thank you for all the blessings you give us and we thank you for the opportunity of serving the city of Allgood and we ask that you help us all to do our duty to the best of our ability and we ask that you'll be with this meeting tonight, it would be pleasing to you and we also ask that you forgive us when we sin and we ask all this now in your Son, Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Our pledge will be led by Mr. David Maynor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is to consider agenda and the minutes, I think everybody's had a chance to review that. Consider approval for those. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second on the floor. Ms. Record, if you would, roll call.
Honorable Hurd?
Yes.
Honorable Green?
Yes.
Honorable Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Consider approval for minutes of the council meeting held on October sixth, two thousand and fifteen. I think everybody's had a chance to review those. Have a motion to accept.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second on the floor. Record.
Honorable Hurd?
Yes.
Honorable Green?
Yes.
Honorable Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Old business, consider approval to suspend reading of six oh three dash fifteen. Keith, you want to speak to that?
Six oh three dash fifteen, it's an order to change the zoning classification of approximately fifteen acres located on Old Walton Road from R one, single-family residential to RD, single-family duplex.
Okay.
I make a motion that we suspend the reading.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion second on the floor. Record.
Honorable Hurd?
Sustained.
Honorable Green?
Yes.
Honorable Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Consider approval of ordinance six oh three dash fifteen to change the zoning classification of approximately fifteen acres located on Old Walton Road, R one, single-family residential to RD, single-family duplex. Keith.
This is a request by Dr. Copeland to change this piece of property from R one, which is low-density residential district, to an RD, single-family duplex district. This has been in the, through the planning commission, they sent it on to the council with positive recommendation. This is just first reading, the second reading will be December the sixth, I believe, I'll get the date, double check, and there'll be an open public floor at that time.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate everyone, whoever.
No, that's not it.
Mm-mm.
We're here. Two.
Sorry. Look at those, sorry.
Do I have a motion for the six oh three?
The approval of the order six oh three, changing the zoning classification.
Okay. Motion fails for, item fails for lack of motion. Next, consider the approval of Bill Benson for the BZA terms expired October two thousand and eighteen. I'll make a motion for that. Sir, second.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Honorable Hurd?
Yes.
Honorable Green?
No.
Honorable Norris?
No.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Excuse me for just one moment. Whose name was put up for that open term?
Bill Benson.
Bill Benson. I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. No.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Okay, that one fails. Bring another name back up, next meeting. Consider approval to appoint Roger Williams to BZA, terms expire in October two thousand and eighteen. I make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second.
Honorable Hurd?
Yes.
Honorable Green?
No.
Honorable Norris?
No.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
No.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Okay. The motion fails. Consider approval agreement with T.DOT for the Burton Branch project and request additional funds in the amount of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Keith, would you speak to that?
This is a request for the construction portion of the Burton Branch project. It is in line with what was previously budgeted and is actually under the budget by about twenty thousand. We had originally projected a hundred and fifty, but this is the construction portion for that third lane for Burton Branch project. And this is authorizing the contract for the mayor to sign, submit that funding. In the event the funding is not used by the state, it will re-return to the city.
Okay. Do I have a motion to support?
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Motion second on the floor. Would, roll call vote.
Honorable Hurd?
I was sustaining.
Honorable Green?
Yes.
Honorable Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Brings us to new business, consider approval to suspend reading Resolution three oh eight dash fifteen. Keith, would you like to speak to that?
Resolution three oh eight fifteen is just a cleanup issue establishing a records management system, ensuring that we have adopted that we are following Tennessee Code annotated ten seven seven oh two and that we are following the M Task Advisory Service Reference Guide for Records Management. We're just suspending the reading of it so it doesn't have to be read its entirety.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion second on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Honorable Hurd?
Yes.
Honorable Green?
Yes.
Honorable Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Consider approval to reapply for the CDBG in the next round for housing. Keith, would you like to speak to that?
We had recently applied for CDBG funding for housing. We had missed that by one, they took the top three in the state, we were number four on the list, so we didn't get that round. So we're going to apply for the next round, next month there'll be a resolution stating what we're applying for, the amount. Again, this is grant money for the city of Allgood, for homeowners that is no cost to the city and helps homeowners bring their homes up to the standard of living.
Okay. Being said, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second on the floor. Roll call vote.
Honorable Hurd?
Yes.
Honorable Green?
Yes.
Honorable Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Consider approval to declare the two thousand and nine Crown Vic Patrol Car VIN number two F A H P one seven one V six nine X one three nine seven oh three as surplus. Keith, would you like to speak to that?
This is a Crown Victoria that's coming off the line that we've replaced with a Charger, so we're just going to get rid of it as surplus property at this point.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Have a motion on the floor?
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote.
Honorable Hurd?
Yes.
Honorable Green?
Yes.
Honorable Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Consider approval to declare two thousand and nine Crown Vic Patrol Car VIN number two F A H P seven one V seven nine X one zero zero five three as surplus. Keith?
Again, another Crown Victoria coming off the line that we're going to declare surplus and get rid of.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second on the floor. Roll call.
Honorable Hurd?
Yes.
Honorable Green?
Yes.
Honorable Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Consider approval to request bids for backhoe for Public Works Water Sewer Department. Keith?
The backhoe we currently have has been experiencing a lot of repair issues, it's been down quite a bit. We're going to take funding that we originally planned for mini excavator, trailer, and some other things and we're going to divert that funding to this backhoe project if approved tonight.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Honorable Hurd?
Yes.
Honorable Green?
Yes.
Honorable Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Consider approval to appoint Don Smith to the Rails Trails Authority in place of Darrell Richards. Keith, would you speak to that?
Dr. Richards had been unable to, unable to attend the meetings, was not, had some issues come up. It was brought to our attention that Don Smith, a Randy Road resident, is an avid bicyclist, used to bicycle to work, retired from Frontier, and he offered that, he would be willing to serve in this position.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion second on the floor. Roll call.
Honorable Hurd?
Yes.
Honorable Green?
Yes.
Honorable Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Consider approval of Resolution three oh eight dash fifteen, establishing a records, records and management system. And that's the reading that we suspended.
Yes.
Previously, so, and you want to speak on that?
This is just a cleanup issue, ensuring that we're following the M Task standards for records management system and that we're maintaining those according to state code.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion second on the floor. Roll call.
Honorable Hurd?
Yes.
Honorable Green?
Yes.
Honorable Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Mayor Belbury?
Yes.
Consider approval of a fencing company for fencing to the amount of described. Keith, would you like to speak to that?
I was asked to put bid tabulation together for the remainder of the fencing to match the fencing that was at the back of City Hall. The bid tabulation for fencing was Putnam County fencing forty-eight, twenty-four, ten, Ace Fence Company forty-two hundred dollars, security fence thirty-five, eighty-eight.
Okay. Any discussion on that? We talked about this last night. Looks like the minimum bid is thirty-five, eighty-eight. We heard from Chief last night that was understaffed, so we're looking at budget issue there. Victor needs a backhoe, ninety thousand to, I think, a hundred and twenty thousand. I'm just thinking, thinking out loud, that thirty-five hundred dollars could be used to put towards that rather than putting a fence back there, but do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
A second.
Motion and second on the floor. Roll call vote.
Honorable Hurd?
No.
Honorable Green?
Yes.
Honorable Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Mayor Belbury?
No.
Okay. That brings us to the city administrator's report.
We clarified on that last one, it was for security fence in the amount of thirty-five, eighty-eight. The budget numbers comparative is thirty-three point three-three percent, general fund revenues are at twenty-nine point seven-nine percent, the general fund expense is at twenty-three point seven-nine percent, the water sewer revenue is at thirty-five point five-one percent, and the water sewer expense is at twenty-two point two-one percent. The Christmas parade is set for December the fourth at six o'clock. Christmas angel applications are being taken for families in Allgood or students who go to Allgood School that would be in need of items for Christmas. The rail trails progressing, the weather's going to slow them down, they were trying to put bedrock down, with still plans of having that completed by next September. The Old Walton Sewer Project has went through the easement phase and has been filed with USDA as awaiting their approval. The drainage project survey results are in, we have submitted those to TDEC as requested and showed that there is a need to work on that drainage project. Department of Defense, do you have anything?
The only thing I would say is I'd like to have, I'd like you to get everybody to put a little bit in our prayers, where we have two employees up there who got killed this morning, put them in our prayers.
That brings us to the hearing of citizens and/or delegations. If you have, if you have a comment you'd like to make, please approach the podium, direct your comments to the chair.
I'm Paige Judd, and I was wondering, I understand we purchased three motorcycles and going through town and watching what's going on, we're only seeing two. Could anybody tell me where the other one's at?
Keith?
We did not purchase three, we were given three by the LISO program. We actually have two and one of them we transferred to the county because we don't have enough people around.
So the other one's with the county? Okay, that's county's guy?
Yeah.
Well, I understood that something about the motor had messed up in it and so it's, it's a messed up one, huh?
We brought the saddlebag.
Oh, okay.
Speed does.
All right, that's just, citizens just wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay.
I just have a question about the rezoning of the White Plains Plantation Home. What happens, this was, tonight was the first reading, but a motion was not even brought, so what happens now?
I'm referring to the council.
What's the question?
The rezoning of the White Plains property, the Copeland property. There are supposed to be two readings, correct? Tonight was the first reading, so, and, but no motion was, nothing could have been voted on tonight anyway, correct? I guess we're just all a little confused as to what's going on with that.
I think they were just having the first reading tonight beyond that.
Okay, but no, and now's the time to have comments on that issue if we need to, or?
Typically that's held at the second.
To the second.
But now I think it has to pass first reading before it can even go to second reading, is that correct?
Correct.
So the motion has failed and looks like it stopped.
Hmm. All right, I think, I don't think that's the way we needed to handle that.
Well, that's, that's because we're the council and you're not the council, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying.
Okay, and everybody's entitled to their opinion.
Yeah, I know, and I think, but I think there are people here who want to make comments and we're not given the opportunity.
Right now's the time to make the comments.
Yeah, I just asked for a form of clarification on, on why the council failed to make a motion for it.
I can't answer that.
I can't answer for those folks either.
Well, I mean, at our last meeting, which was a public meeting, work session, I had mostly all in favor and supportive and very enthusiastic about the concept, so to not have any comment tonight's very, I think, shocking frankly.
Well, I-
I'm not sure what, I'd like some feedback to know what's-
I will speak on my behalf, okay?
Thank you.
As the mayor, I was elected by the citizens to look for their, their best interest or what they wanted, not what I wanted. Since our meeting, I've had several folks come to me that lived over there that was against that. More people were against it that came that, that was for it. Now, I can't speak for them, that's why I didn't make a motion, that's why I didn't second it.
I appreciate your comment.
If there had been, there had been a motion, that's why I didn't. You know, I've, I've got those folks and, and it didn't, it's not a point of who voted for me, for me doing what they want, it's because I'm everybody's mayor. I have to represent everybody. And if I've got ten people over here against it and two for it, then, then I have to take that under consideration. You're out of order. If you want to speak, you come back to the podium, ma'am. But that, that's, that's my, and if any of the other council folks would like to speak, they're welcome to do that.
I would welcome any, any comment to-
For exactly those same reasons, sir, was the reason I did not move on it at all. For those exact same reasons, I had several people approach me within the last thirty to forty-five days that were interested.
I've been out of, I've been out of the loop for the past two months, just got married.
Ms. Green?
Yes, the same thing.
I respect your opinion and appreci, I honestly appreciate the feedback, that's very important.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
I know that all of you know my passion for the house and the, the property and I really think it's important to Allgood. We've tried so hard and we think it's very important for Allgood to consider making it into, into a park for everybody. If we were to sell that house to somebody else, what if they tear it down? We, I mean, that is false history, we can't bring history back. And so, the family has to do something with it. And I really want all of you on the city council to realize, it's, that's in your hands. And if history isn't important and somebody takes it over and tears it down, you know, three presidents, three United States presidents were there, does that matter? Yes, it matters. But, you know, if land is more important to somebody else to build bigger houses on and tear down that house, I just think you ought to reconsider. I really, really do. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay.
I'm Yvette Jenkins, I'm president of the Friends of White Plains. I guess I'm a little dense, but would you explain that to me one more time?
Which, which part, ma'am?
The whole part. I don't understand, I thought we were coming tonight for approval perhaps on the first reading. I don't think Dr. Copeland was ever given a chance to present his readings or his renderings from our last meeting. Am I not right on that?
He, I think some of them requested some more information as to what he was going to do, then it was placed on the agenda. The agenda then has to have a motion. There was no motion, so there could be no second.
So you're saying perhaps if you talk to ten people that didn't want it and two that did want it, that constitutes no, is that right?
That's my decision, yes, because that's what-
Well, ten to two is not a very good ratio to find out who really is interested in this project.
Those numbers were thrown out there. I didn't say that I talked exactly to ten people, I used that for an example.
No, I know, I understood that, right. You know, this has been a wonderful project and you all have been so gracious to let us work with you for, what, a year or two now? But it is to the point where it is so important for you to really consider the importance of this land. It's not just a piece of land, it actually is a very historical piece of land. And it really is the forerunner of Allgood. Those of you who know history know that. In eighteen oh nine, when it was first established, because it was established, you have Allgood today. So, you know, I just wish that you could look at this again and try to reconsider what is important. Is it important because you're just not ready for it? You're not ready for the progress of it? Or you just don't want it, period? I'm really, I'm really concerned that something could happen to this house and, and if someone else gets a property, they may not be as interested in the historical preservation as some of us are. So, thank you for really listening to us at different times, but I sure wish you'd think about it again long and hard. The Copelands have been so gracious to allow the Friends to have events there. We've, we've given it every chance we can to invite Allgood to come and see this house, see this property. So, thank you for letting me speak and I hope you can look at it again once more time.
Someone else?
I'm Roger Williams. I'm hearing rumors about the Burton's Branch project. I hear we're going to have to go down five feet to hit bedrock. When they started this, it was going to cost us seven hundred thousand dollars, I think, with Mayor Fauch. And we could have got out of it for a hundred and fifty thousand. Now, from what I can tell, if you go down five feet, that sewer, what I'm hearing, five feet sewer, gas, water, it's going to hit almost one point four. That's the number I think was thrown out last night. You're saying you need that, you're saying we run the lease, where's this extra from seven hundred to eight hundred thousand going to come from? If it does cost that park, is it, are we going to have to pay, if we pay for the third lane, is that going to make it more? Or is that counting the third lane, digging the five foot out, or what? What's-
Third lane's already included in it, the five foot, we just found that out yesterday, it's the first we'd heard of it, that they were going to have to dig it down, put bedrock back down.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is, you're about half a million behind right now.
Yeah, we're not exactly sure on that.
Half a million. So, where's it coming from and how you going to get it? That's all I got. And I'm farther wrong, don't get me wrong, but we're spending money and we've not got it. You're already saying you keep having to shut down for stuff. And we've not got it.
Okay. Anyone else?
My name's Bill, I'm that same thing, I'm spending money that you don't have. Is it legal to adjust your budget for unexpected expenses?
Would you like to?
Is it legal to? Yes.
You can adjust it, you can, you have a, a set budget and then, let's just say attorney fees enter into it. You didn't plan on that. You're allowed to adjust that budget legally and just say, okay, now we can pay a half a million dollar attorney fees.
The council who sets the budget can also adjust the budget, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one more, I guess, comment or request. I think you can tell the passion of the people that, that love the historic home. If y'all don't want a development, if you do not want, you know, townhomes there or whatever, then help us come up with a solution to save the house. You know, if we can find a developer that will put single-family homes in, something that, like Yvette said, the Copelands have worked with us for a long time to help us come up with a solution and let, you know, as a, as a community, let's take pride in that historic home and do something about it, but we need your help, obviously.
Don't misunderstand, I'm not against the Copelands and I'm sure nobody else here is.
No, I know, I'm just saying-
We want to see them progress, we really do.
But as you know, that was a plan to keep, to help save the house.
I understand that.
So, yeah.
But the folks that has contacted, obviously, the other parts of the council as well, was that the homes were there, it wasn't the historic portion of it. I don't think there's anybody against the historic portion, and I wish we had some way to take care of both sides of that, so to speak.
But I was going to say, and you've heard from the people who are against it, which makes sense. I happen to live there and I happen to be for it, which makes sense. I think if you polled, if you asked, maybe called a meeting of everyone in the, in the surrounding area and explained the whole situation, people's opinions might change one way or the other. So you're not making your decision based on a few, you know, a few people who are against it and not letting those who are for it, you know, make their point, but-
The ones, the ones that were against it found me and they voiced their opinion, I would have thought the ones for it would have done the same thing.
Right. And, but some of the ones, I, because I've talked to some of the ones that are against it and they didn't understand the whole, the whole process, the whole, the whole, the reason behind it for saving the historic home, for putting townhomes in versus apartments or all that. And I think if everyone who lived there knew all the details, then the results might be a little bit different.
It could be.
But again, we're saying, even if, even if the townhomes can't go in there, let's, as a community, let's find a way to save that home.
I, I personally think deep down that we all, we all want to preserve the home and we all want to preserve the property. And, and, and I think that deep down, we would like to actually have a park there, but because money is the way it is, we're not able to put a park there, so we're hesitant in, in, in allowing anybody to, this is just what, just kind of what I'm feeling, to do anything to the property because we deep down want to preserve it and possibly make a park, but that's where I feel we may be hesitant because it's such a wonderful property and so important. So, it, but money is the way it is and we can't afford it right now.
Right. So how do we do that, though? I mean, if, if things stand the way they are and the Copelands turn around and sell it to someone else who wants to develop it, the house can be raised and it's gone. And I think we presented as a White Plains group ways for the city to make money on it to maybe help, you know, not, obviously not pay for the parking one month's sum, but help bring some income in to offset the loss, but, I don't know, I'm just asking you as a, you know, as a council, let's look at what's best for the community, not in short term, you know, little goggles right ahead of us, so.
Well, Ms. Duncan, I have a question for you. You, you're on the planning commission and you voiced your opinion tonight about the increase of the apartments that you didn't agree with because it would increase traffic and other things.
Right.
This is going in the same area, what makes one, you're against one and you're for the other?
Well, because here's why. The apartments are already going in, there's nothing I can do about that. There's a hundred and twenty units there. We're talking maybe forty units of these townhomes that are nicer looking. Odds are most people that buy townhomes are going to be maybe older people, not as many children. To me, it's a good buffer between a large apartment complex and a private neighborhood. Is it ideal? No, but it's the only chance we've got to save that house. And I like it versus the, you know- Uh, and I like it versus the, you know, versus the other option. Um, and like I said, had the apartments never gone in there, I, you know, my opinion may change. Um, I don't know, but I, I don't see forty units of, um, increasing the traffic that much, when you're talking about a hundred and twenty units already going in anyway.
Wouldn't your calculation, two cars per apartment, that would be eighty, eighty more vehicles on that little bitty road?
Right.
That we're already having trouble with school zones that are, our police chief is having issues, so...
But no, it, it just amazes me that no one seemed to, as much negativity as there was about the apartment complex, no one seemed to be concerned about that, because it passed. But now we're talking about nicer units that match the White Plains home, we can save the historic home, and now nobody wants it, I don't, I, I don't understand the difference, but...
With one response, that was passed with the previous council.
Right, I know, I know, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, let's look at the best thing for the community, and saving that home is it. How we do it is up to y'all, so.
Sorry to take your time, just, just a point of facts, actually, the way it's zoned now, with fifteen acres, by my calculations, I, we could put fifty-six houses on it now. So, I think there's a lot of misperception, a lot of numbers being thrown out there because of paranoia. And I think we really need to be talking real numbers and not paranoia. Uh, there's no way with, if we did what we wanted to do with a print, with a planned residential development, a nice gated community, very nicely done with the architecture blending in, there's no way we would get anywhere close to being over that number that's already zoned at R one, in my opinion. Now, I don't have an engineering survey, I'll grant you that, but I'm just telling you, as an honest man standing before this entire council, these numbers that are being thrown around are not being taken into reality, because the math, the math is, is good. And fifty-six units now, as it's zoned currently. So, and I will say this, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, the ones who are against something will always call before the ones that are more supportive, in my opinion. And, and I would hate that the council made a decision because they had the neighbors calling, but the rest of the community didn't call to say, oh, we're in for it, we're, we're in favor of it. Because I think in general, you're not gonna ever get that kind of, uh, situation. So, it's a little disappointing that you guys have made your decision based on a small group of folks that are adjacent. I think that's important to listen, absolutely, and I've tried to consider all their concerns and have brought forward, along with the supporters of White Plains house, that we are considered of that. So, I'm, I'm frankly disappointed in your rationale of how you've come to your decision tonight. But, but thank you.
Any other comments?
Move the turnip.
Second.